One o'clock P M.
Yes.
This is fine, Wednesday, January thirty first. And I will call the Parks Recreation at Open Spaces, AKA Pro's Committee meeting, special meeting to order. And we, all committee members are present, so we have a quorum. We've got a delightful gathering from the public. And we've got several people on Zoom currently on Zoom. We have Harry Farmer, Jeff Quasny, Jose Luis Sanchez, Laura Karly Swartz, and Tony. I believe that'd be Tony Church, I'm guessing. Hopefully Tony will try again and we'll find out. And let's share reports. Do I have? No, I don't. I have no sharing report. Fine. What have I missed in starting the meeting? I've done some reflection. Steve Nippon suggested, a great suggestion at the last meeting on the topic where we have members of other groups, F F R P, Green Space, et cetera. You know, have, have reports. Just we moved that up earlier on the agenda. Looking at it, it's hard to see where to put it because I thought we would want to have the ad hoc reports and opportunity for public comment prior to that. So I'll just ask, you know, Kenny, you're the only one this applies to, but I didn't make the change to the agenda. Let's see how that goes. If anyone has any, something that shouldn't come later, that's great, but it seems likely we want to hear that hot committee reports. We would want to hear public and, and from F and R. And then, but Kenny.
I mean, just say for the outside organizations, their scheduling would be a lot easier if they knew they were doing it at that, at a certain time.
Yeah.
Rather than sometime over a course of two hours. So you might have more participation. I think that's a good idea.
Okay. So we'll just make the exact time. And we haven't gotten there yet. We won't stop and move to. Nice idea. All right. And thank you for that. We've got some ad hoc meeting reports. In the agenda packet, on page three, we've got, you know, the signage and the EMEA department ad hoc summary. And anything new exciting on the signage? We, I was pretty darn excited to see at the ad hoc bar, the two signs that say the hours are seven thirty A M. So Doug, that's an improvement.
Signage, we're still working, just simple picking the font and colors at the moment, style guide.
Yeah.
And then we'll move forward from there.
Yeah. We'll see that one whenever that's ready. All right. And, and the, the committee part plan ad hoc work in progress. We're got a spreadsheet. We're evaluating each of the potential components. And we're working away at that. Community committee member communications. Anyone on the committee has something to share?
I'll, I'll just share what little I have. We had a meeting on December thirteenth with the county. I think that's since we've been there. And it basically discussed the coming down the trail versus the Burton Drives, as well as there's other projects, intersections on the, on the sidewalk, get people across safely. And the first one, Burton Drive, the county had said previously it was not going to build the sidewalk on the side of the road of Burton Circle. And after looking at the issues, and with the, we would have to maintain the other trail they might participate in. It was funding or part of it or something like that. But basically, we, we default, you know, leave back to their maintenance along Burton Drive is a preferred one. And they were going back and they were sport. They had previously had four alternatives. None of them were all that good and they were very expensive. But they went back, are going to go back and see if they can find a better alternative to come down the, the hill with pedestrian path right in their right of way. So at this time, that's kind of where we're discussing. But we haven't discussed anything. That's what they said at the time. They're going to take another look at it. Another look means another look, doesn't say there is. The second, tried to, they did not want anything to do with the kind of intersection issue. There's four intersections, in my opinion, that, this, this basically through N C A C, where we talked about going to cross pedestrians crossing the highway. And our, you know, the, the Main Street, Burton Drive, and all the way over to Windsor. And what's the next one? Anyway, there, anyway pedestrians get, there's no crosswalks at some of them. And some of them there are, when you get to the other side, you're back in the weeds. So the, just making it easier off the right of way is the goal. And then the county part, which they kind of promptly said, we're not going to do anything until, or you know, you go start with Caltrans, if you want to talk intersections. Well, I will, but it does also have to do with, once you've gotten past the, the road as a pedestrian across the highway, to get out of the county right way, then you have a lot of areas that, frankly, pedestrians right back on the walkway. You can go on the highway, one, you're usually used to traveling fifty-five or hundred and five, whatever you have to be doing that day. And coming up and then you're, you're, it's a while before they slow down after the red light or green light that they have, back to twenty-five to thirty-five. So there is a certain amount of area that would be good for have pedestrian walkway and not a paved sidewalk, you know, not a curb gutter thing, but just a little bit of area cleared off the side that they could leap to as opposed to just kind of cringing on the sideways for the traffic to go by. So that's in process. If we're the, someone from the Caltrans has contacted me and asked for my pictures. So evidently they have gotten a message and it went through John DeNancy of Slow, of Slow Call. And the, so stay tuned and I'm sure another five or six months, we might get something else from them or some kind of statement. And then the other one was just the, uh, bridge under the highway at San Rosa Creek and the highway one. And no word on that, no. It has fallen into abyss somewhere. I'll have to start, start that over again probably for Caltrans.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you, comment. Joe? I have three sort of questions, comments, observations. One is, um, I've been trying to understand, let me state this first though. I have a big fan of the skate park, but I've been trying to figure out the funding. And just before this meeting, I went on the council website, I went on C C S D website, skate Cambridge websites. And my feeling is that it's not very clear where we are with funding. And I feel like it would be incumbent upon, and I'm not sure who it's incumbent upon. My sense of it is would be with Matt. Right, is to work either with Julie or cancel.
I was going to say, if you would like, we can set up a meeting with Julie and sit down and have a, she can walk you through everything.
We, this isn't just for me. I think there's confusion in the community. I've had some conversations with people who are equally as sort of confused and they're very supportive of the project, but they just don't understand where we are with the funding. And one of the concerns is, well, what if we don't get a six hundred thousand dollar grant? What happens then? What efficiency plan B? And so I think there are a number of questions, at least in, in my mind and others seem to have, that would be great, I think, for the community to have clarity on, so that it's transparent. And my feeling about it is, and this, I'm not blaming anybody at all, far from it, that it's a little confusing about, about the funding for it.
Well, I, yeah, yeah, that's great. Because I was pretty pumped a few months ago when the district put a projects page, a project updates on the C C S D website. You know, prior to Matt McLean, there, there was no such thing and you had to hunt and hunt. So right there, skate park, that seemed like an easy place to, you know, three, four lines. Here's how it works. That's what you're thinking, right?
That's exactly what I would suggest. I think that would be very helpful for the community.
Nice.
And we could also, because we can help direct people to our pros site there, pages there. The second, second one is, and I became aware of this in the Far South Focus Group meeting the other day, in terms of, and again, nothing, but the F F R P and pros kind of jurisdictions and the projects that are being undertaken with Calfire on the ranch and on the West Ranch and other projects. So I'm really just trying to understand sort of where, you guys are here obviously today, I'm sure to talk about the bridge, but other things that go on in the ranch, where does pros and an F F R P begin? Is that clear? Is it? It seems to me we should make, make that clear. I'd like to be maybe a little clearer on that because we, I mean, our mandate is open space. Plenty of open space on the ranch and community park is on the East Ranch. So it's a little unclear to me and it feels like that could be clear. And that's not to be territorial or anything, but just to have a general, basic understanding of where things, the boundaries.
Yeah. Yeah, you will notice, I mean, and others have noticed recently, there is this matrix of responsibilities. A year or two ago, I was looking for that. And apparently we, it hasn't been created.
Okay.
And, or updated. This would be defined.
Perfect. In that matrix. Okay. Yeah. Perfect. And then my last one is, um, in, also in that, um, I believe that meeting, the conversation, and David, you're probably know about this, is the, the hundred and ninety odd open space parcels of C C S D that are apparently going to be undergoing Calfire fuel treatments. Um, I, but that was a little premature because we have as part of our whole identifying what those open spaces are specifically and then building an overall use and management plan for those. And it would feel to me, just again, not trying to be territorial, but where is our purview for open space begin and end? Is it, if there's going to be some kind of a treatment plan, that it would be discussed as part of that management plan for those parcels? So.
We'd be, maybe ready to get that on the agenda soon? Is that the we the payment?
No, all of the.
Well, what's going on with them? It's we the baby. That's all we're doing.
Aye.
Clearing all dead grass, dead trees, stuff of that nature. That's it. I mean, that's on the parcels.
On the, on the east, sorry.
On the parcels.
On our parcels?
Yeah, that's all it is.
Yeah.
It's not redeveloping anything, not going in there ripping things out. It's just whatever's falling, dead trees, stuff of that nature, any fuel is what we're removing.
No, I understand that, but part of it is, is having, I guess, our perspective on maybe the best approach to do that. And there are different ways to do fuel abatement.
Okay.
And I think have personally, I mean, if we're going to say those are our properties to have a purview over as open space under our pros name, then it feels like to me.
The last goal, uh, on the page, inventory of open spaces owned by the district, begin to develop a management plan.
Right.
So you're talking about progressing that goal.
Right.
We can define.
Right.
Boundaries on what we do.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's, and I'm, again, not trying to build territories here, but just to really, I think, more clearly identify our purview, how it interacts with other pieces of our community jurisdictions. And we should be clear on that, it seems to me.
So that is already on the list of goals and there's two names on there right now.
Yep.
David's up first and your name is on there too.
Right.
Does it make sense for us to perform an ad hoc and say, kind of perform that with the draft? Would that be useful to you? Yeah, think about it and what we'll talk about when we get there. Good.
That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else on the committee?
I have been tasked with the county parks. So I went last Thursday. Great. It was horrific. Not really. Well, it was because I don't like to leave a meeting early just because I don't. So I stayed and I listened to the strategic plan of the county parks for the upcoming five years. And so now I know a lot of things, which was good. I'm glad I went and got it. Now, that's not what I'm going to share with you. They are a willing group. They look much, very much like us. They sit in a bigger room, but there's no one else in the room. And when you're there to talk to them, they want to talk to you about your stuff. So if we need them, they're there, they're easily accessible. They've got no money, right? They're not, they got no help that way. But they do have sixty-seven employees and thirty-eight. Well, they, then in the strategic plan, all this stuff is kind of laid out. So there's a bureaucracy and an apparatus there that's, that's accessible to us. The pickle bark, pickleball people from Los Osos, I've watched now over the last year because they've got help from them over there and their thing. And it was all very copacetic. I did bring up the idea that we are trying to, I said for the first time, a trail between Cayucus and Cambria. And they bit on that Pandora Nash corner was all up in it because they're doing the trail from Cayucus, from Orbe to Cayucus. And so she was like, hey, let's get them, you know, it was very premature, but it was very much that they are looking for stuff. So I told them somebody else would go next time. They've kind of identified me and be really good if someone else goes and says, hey, and you can leave after the first fifteen minutes. You don't have to stay through the whole thing and you're downtown on Thursday, fourth, fourth Thursday of the month. But you need to check it because they canceled too. Like last year, they canceled, three of the meetings are changed them or whatever. So you got to stay current. And if you are going to go, let me know and I'll help to make sure that that meeting is going to take place because you can find it on the website on the county park.
I want to go, then so I'll, I'll.
Yeah, good.
And I'll do the next one. Just out of curiosity, what about, they have no money? They, you're talking about them as an organization.
Yeah.
Do they assist in finding money?
You know, it doesn't, they have a couple of staff, you know, they've got an administrator. It looks like a lady that's probably paid, but it doesn't look like they've got many people in their administrative office to do those kinds of things. No. But they would sign on, you know, when I told them, hey, we got, you know, that six hundred thousand dollar grant. They were like, ah, you know, they're all very excited for the stuff that's going on. But they don't have a huge budget either, you know, and they're getting, yeah, everybody got trimmed four percent or something like that in the county at the county level. You know, the stuff I know now.
Do we bring things to them? Is that who's there?
Well, that's, I think that's kind of what we're trying to understand what that relationship is and what they do and how they can assist us.
Okay, so the magic is not quite explained, Joe.
Not in my mind. I'd like somebody else go to that meeting and tell me, you know, and all of those people are appointed by the supervisors and they, they kind of serve as an advisory role to the county parks. Listen, when they, like, we're talking right here about policy and I hope they don't record this and watch this later, but when they're, when we were like talking policy right here in this interaction we're having, they literally said, oh, do you guys have any reports? Their reports were literally the trails they had been walking on. Some guy from Santa Margarita, some guy from Pismo, some other guy playing basketball in the Pomo. And that was the reports. I thought, man, I want to be on that committee. I'm going to be all over those trails. Anyway, but it's, but they're all very good people and they're volunteering to doing the stuff that they do. So anyway, there you go.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Anything else? So we'll, we'll move to public comment. And this, this is a special meeting, right? We had the meeting on January sixteenth, which we, we canceled. I was out COVID. Shannon was in Tennessee, you know, some food and things like that, everything to do. So being a special meeting, there is no public comment on things that are not on the agenda. And as we get to each agenda topic, I, we will bring in public comment on each agenda topic. But if anybody wants to comment now on what's already on the agenda rather than later, you're welcome to. More efficient if you do it when we're on the topic. But I've seen no hands up on Zoom. No one's stirring in the audience, so I guess we'll wait for the topic to come up. And.
Hi.
That's rational. Think that brings us to Dave and Tom, just trying to resource, what else do you have for us?
I don't know. We've been on our reporter rating. We don't have anything right now. I'll be honest with you, we're down with the crew and we haven't been out in the past month. I'll be honest with you.
September.
Yeah. Well, tell us, you have a new guy that started Monday and someone else starting next Monday, right?
Uh, you are a hundred percent correct. Started Monday and today was the last.
Oh.
So we're back down to one.
He started Monday and quit? Sweet.
We have it.
Yeah, I want everyone to know that's where the world is at right now.
So we do have another track reminded for another new hire. So we are reopening and reevaluating other applications.
That's hard to file, but let's just say it's better to find out sooner.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, we did actually close down the trails out there at the ranch on West Ranch, sloping hazards. We've had a couple of reports and different things out there. Trail eight, what's that the?
The Dumeander Trail.
Yeah. From the boardwalk. Correct. So that's one.
Which we're going to be discussing.
Correct. So it's kind of, yeah, goes hand in hand on this one here.
Yeah.
And so, yeah. And then we did have a couple of trees down up there in the, on our world. It was, yeah, a couple of them came down up there. So we're going to be looking into that, getting those cleaned out and situated. So, yeah, there's been some stuff in the background, but yeah, it's been kind of hard on us. So.
Okay. Topic four, brief reports from other groups that have influence in this space. And there's one seven one four phone number that's on, on the screen right now. Definitely jot that down. That helps us to know who, who it was. But they'll raise their hand if it happens to be one of these groups. But Kenny, do you want to share anything else, you know, other than the one?
Yes. Yeah. Um, thank you. We added in January, Friends and Fiscal Union Ranch Preserve said goodbye to two long-serving board members, Joyce Frenchaw and Mark Flarsen, which was very sad. But we also were able to add three new board members. Two of whom are here today, right here. Yeah, two of whom are here today. I just wanted to see if Catherine came in. But Margaret, Josephson, Sherry, Rob, and Scotty and Kathleen Camp are now on our board. I give you a rundown on.
Who's the third one?
Kathleen Camp, C A M P. See you, Kathleen. Just a few update or summaries from last year are dozen walks in twenty twenty-three. We offered twenty-three walks that were attended by three hundred and seventeen people and those were all free to the public. Some of them, we're happy to say we partnered with the California Native Plant Society, the Moro Coastal Autobahn Society and Green Space, which was, was nice to, we have our wonderful volunteers and we did a lot of forest and bluff walks, but it's nice to diversify a little bit. In our school programs last year, we served a hundred and seventy students, introduced them to the cultural and natural history of the ranch from Cambria Grammar School, Santa Lucia Middle School, Leffingwell High School. And this year, Coast Union High School is going to come out. We also had students from Fresno come out. We were on their list, so they come every year. It's nice to see the coast. Many of them have never seen the ocean before. And a lot of home schools from around Passau, quite a few of their schools come. On the ranch, we have a new bench on the Ridge Trail, a stone bench that replaces the wooden Haritunian bench, which is the first bench off the Huntington entrance. It's beautiful, big, lots of room for people. It has received, it has been well received, unlike many changes. So that's really great. And the Haritunian bench, which was actually in pretty decent shape, is now over at the Big Oak because the bench there was, well, you could, you could lean back, it went to over. So that one's been, that, that bench got refurbished. Trail work has been going on thanks to help from David, I would say in his crew, but David and Bert. Supply which helps. So they've been doing trail work, but that's inevitably turning into invasive weed control as the rains come. So thank you. That's my update.
Okay. And I acknowledge, we don't have any of these other groups on present, so.
I wish I was the one on board on one.
Ah, okay.
Just like trying to get in here and let you know. That was me.
Awesome. Yeah, it makes sense. Right? Yeah. Well, thanks for, thanks for coming. So this brings us to the consistent agenda, the always easiest topic on the agenda. You, hopefully have a look at what the agenda packet says we did at our December fifth meeting and do we have any errors or corrections? Right shaking. All right, so who wants to? This is a chance we get somebody move with three seconds.
I'll move to accept them.
All right.
I can't.
Shannon and Joe.
As Secretary, I don't know.
Absolutely. So I've learned, yeah, the order of voting is whoever moves, votes first and then whoever seconds votes second. And how do I figure it out? The other order I think is from either the newest to the oldest or the oldest to the newest, but I'll, I'll never get that right. But Shannon. Your I R A, right.
Okay.
Thanks.
Oh, I, I.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Hi.
All right, five eyes.
Hi.
Which.
Didn't know what we were sorting out, but.
It got done.
Which we're moving along quickly. It's exciting. So I'm going for, this brings us to topic six A. I haven't missed anything, have I? Last meeting I did, so around a little bit. Six A. So Link, you want me to put your power point up?
Yeah. I'm going to come on here.
Is it the same as what's in the packet?
It's a little different.
Okay, well, definitely.
That's why I want to use that PowerPoint, not the PDF.
Please.
I remember standard.
And I will. Those step one and folks on Zoom will, I'm going to put the PowerPoint on, so we won't be able to see your hands, but you know, at some point we'll, we'll do public comment.
We can do shares.
So shares, oh yeah, it'll still be this, right? And here we go.
Thank you, Michael. So. Thank you and thank you to my board members for coming in person and on Zoom to support this project. So if you've been on pros while, this may look familiar to you, it's very much like presentation that I, before about the boardwalk on Fiscal Union Ranch Preserve, which has been a project on the books long before I came. I moved to Cambria. So we're just trying to move it along. As a reminder, it's on the south end of the preserve near Marine Terrace. The Marine Terrace neighborhood, there's Windsor, Windsor and Marlboro for orientation. What we're trying, so you have the Marine Terrace ADA Accessible Trail, the Bluff Accessible Trail, and in between is a connector. And that, that connector is not accessible. At the north end of the ranch, those two ADA accessible trails come together, but it's south, south end of the ranch. If you have, if you need an ADA accessible trail, although it's not really, you have to go down Wedgewood Street. And so you have to go out onto the public street, which as you know, has no sidewalks and is actually quite steep. And I know people do this because if you look up accessibility on the ranch, you get this advice to go out on Wedgewood. It's just seems, it's just un, kind of unsafe, even with Cambria traffic, which is not very much. But the existing trail is also very unsafe. But the existing trail is also very unsafe. Uh, this is the trail that David had to go out and close. Um, one of our volunteers broke her ankle on it last year. Most of the people who have walked this have fallen. One of the issues that happens is it's wet. So people, and it's slippery, so people go off into the grass to find a place that's less slippery and the trail is getting wider and wider and wider, which is not a conservation. Goal, not a conservation. So we've been working and planning with this, working with, uh, local firms, RRM Wallace and SWCA, all firms who have worked with CCSD. Uh. See, uh, CW SWCA did, uh, mapping for us a couple of years ago. Mapping environmentally sensitive habitat, in this case, it's, uh, grasses. That are either wetland grasses or. Wetlandish grasses. But they're native grasses. Uh, that became our base map. For the plan and just again, the Marine Terrace Trails at the top, Block Trail at the bottom and the existing connector is here in Gold. What we would like to do is. Build and pay for this boardwalk and take out the existing connector and replace it and restore it with native grasses. That are from these grasses that are adjacent.
Um, can I ask a question at that point?
Sure.
Thanks, the flags that are out there.
Yeah.
Do the flags represent the current route that's planned?
No, the flags don't have anything to do with it, those were flags, there are flags that are on it there that were put out by the California Conservation Corps. In a route that they thought was more aesthetically pleasing, um. It is more aesthetically pleasing, it's a nice gentle curve, kind of maximally impacts the, the, the sensitive habitat. Um. So they didn't ask, they just went out without those flags.
Sweet, pull those up.
Sure. I think that would be great, no, no, this is so. Wallace Group did this outline and then, um, RRM went out there and actually surveyed it. So our initial survey was done by a drone, it was very, it was. Suggestive. Um. And RRM went out and did an actual site survey last year, did soil testing, did all that. Did all that, the engineering so that we could have. Um. Get construction review done, so we've had our CQ clearance, the county, uh, said that. The project is in substantial compliance with our existing EIR, man, plan and permit, our coastal development permit. As long as we comply with all the rules that we would have had to comply with anyway. The construction review has been done since October. We, it's the funding, um, FMRP. Without actually having an estimate, I believe that we have at least. Most of the funding, if not all of the funding in hand in the bank already, we've been, the board has set this aside for quite some time. Um. The boardwalk will be very similar, it will look exactly like this boardwalk, same dimensions, same top material. The only difference is we're going to use the footings like they used on Minstoun Beach. Which require far less excavation. Um, which is great because the goal is to disturb the habitat as little as possible and I was super excited to, to learn about these footings. Um. The county had never seen them before. And they passed them right through our construction permitting, because they met all their requirements. Uh, so the boardwalk itself would be about a thousand feet long, six feet wide. Um. So we have the boardwalk, right? So it's CCSD. Has many times been given gifts that are really maybe not gifts so much. Like here, why don't you care for these vacant lots here, so one of the things that we're doing is. Want to establish a main, a trail maintenance fund. Now, the existing boardwalk is, um. I think it's seventeen years old, maybe eighteen years old now, requires very little maintenance because it was very well constructed. We made it a very high, or we didn't, CCSD and the California Conservation Board made out very high quality materials. And we're going to do the same on this one, so it shouldn't require much maintenance for quite a long time, but we're, um. In the process of selling, uh. Plaques, dedication plaques. To raise money for an endowment. Mind you, we don't, we don't have a permit, we don't have a contract to build the boardwalk, so this is, it's all, it's still a little tentative. Um, but if we sell them out, then we'll get money per year. Um, to pay for it, and since currently the maintenance for the boardwalk is largely volunteers on their knees pulling grass. Uh, which they'll continue to do, it's very low cost.
For lack of a picture.
That is exactly what they were doing. And it's my very favorite. Volunteer picture by phone. So. That's one of our.
Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that's it, okay, you. So, um. You know, you've all seen the, the whole package and, uh, alright, thanks, very nice. Um, I think it, this is going to boil down to two questions, one is. Like, is the information that we've received sufficient, you know, to bring, for, uh, FFRP to bring to the board? And. You know, does it go to the board with the, uh, kind of affirmation, you know, the, uh, support of this committee? Uh, those are the questions, um. So in what order do we want to hear, I guess, maybe just questions from the committee of like, uh. About information, before we get into the frozen con, but whatever, what? Like, what questions do you have? And then we'll, we'll go to public comment. And then we'll come back for discussion and. Well, close it down. Oh, yeah. Shannon and then Kermit.
I'm just curious, if that trail maintenance fund extends onto the east ranch or is it just? For the west ranch, and that is spelled out in when you raise the money.
Well, the, raising the money in instance, an endowment for public access and trail maintenance.
So we could, how would? That extends then to the east ranch?
Uh, look at my board. We have not discussed that, I would say.
There's the west ranch, there's the east ranch, and then there's the community park. Which has separate, doesn't have an identity, so, so. I would say yes to east ranch, west ranch, to the extent that the, the community park would be another issue.
Yeah.
And then there's under the bridge, which would really be helpful.
Yeah, and I'm only asking because of course you're raising money for trails and so I, I do wonder if people would. Automatically assume that that would be for both sides.
I think they probably assume it's to pay for the boardwalk maintenance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because that's what, because. What we're talking about is, um. Giving, giving, it's a, like a turnkey project, entirely done with private funds. And then turned over. But it's like those locks, you don't want to turn them over without money to maintain them.
Right, so the scope of what we're considering today is the proposal to build the Lincoln Board.
Yeah, I get it, I get it, I mean, it was just that last piece I'm asking about and, and I'm, I'm totally in support, so I don't. I mean, I'm sure.
Good job.
Alright.
Good question.
Um, I always have a question, one is, um. But what, I assume the windows on the upper portion of that were to maintain it at a steady grade?
Yes.
And the, um, rate you're keeping at is? Six percent, under six percent or four percent?
I think it's under, there's some areas where it's a little bit steeper, but I don't even think, I'm not sure they go up to five percent. No, it's all, it's all been engineered to be compliant with the law.
And then the other one is, uh. In case of fire, what have you protected?
I think we will, although, um. You know, I was thinking in case of.
If it's E Bay, I don't think it's.
Yeah, I was gonna say, in case of fire, I've been looking at the houses, not worried about more.
The, the boardwalk costs as much as a house.
Actually, I think my house is more than mine. Um, but it is made out of, uh, it will be made out of a tropical hardwood that's very.
Very, very resistant.
And probably won't burn.
It doesn't.
Yeah.
Can I comment? It's not a marshland, too, very wet. Um, which is.
It is a grass. It's a grass field.
Rarely dries out like we see on the east ranch.
Burns, burns well. I'm just curious, I was just. Aesthetic, aesthetic question.
Well, it certainly looks something.
I've never heard anything else, yeah.
Right, uh, so. Okay, um, apologies if I missed something, but, um, on the funding, so I mean, reference that. You appear to have the funding in, in place. But I, I didn't see, I haven't seen a cost to build or did I?
I haven't got an estimate.
Okay, so we don't know, it's unsure whether the actual, um, funding right now. Is sufficient or do you have a sense of what it would cost and the funding is there, pretty much with private donations, I guess, what's the? What would be the delta between what you've got and what it's going to cost to build or do you know?
When I started at FFRP, the estimate was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, I'm sorry, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that was years ago, and now, um, we have set aside four hundred thousand.
Okay.
But because. Because of COVID and, but I, as far as I know, none of our supplies are coming through the straight of homes. So. Be relatively good for, for supply side, I mean, I think some of those costs may up down. Um, but.
The other question being, um, what, uh, what amount of expenses, uh, of expenditure are you seeking funding from CCSD? That would be my next simple answer. Steve, okay, zero, so.
Zero, it would be an FFRP issue.
Okay. So nothing would happen until you actually have the funding in place and so, okay, great, got it, that.
Well.
Not true.
I can't do anything until a CCSD board approves it, no.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah, I recommend that, uh. We let them present this to the board and.
I think, but let's, let's do here, here. Opportunity for public comment before we cut up that opportunity, uh, I, I suspect that the public senses, uh.
Ten minutes or not?
You wanted to say something and, yeah. Does have some, you know, impact on the finances, okay?
Yeah, and we do have the money in hand that we think it's going to be, but until we get an estimate, you never know. Um, we've been talking about it for two years, everybody's on board, all the board members.
Sure.
Um, that's why we're here. On this lovely, man, Wednesday afternoon.
Pouring rain comes.
As a person who's slipped on that trail more than once, uh, as well as a person who firmly believes in ADA access for all of our public spaces. Yeah, I'm fully in support of it. And as a board member.
Yeah.
Can I ask why you have to ask the board permission?
Uh, the GM, uh. Wants FFR, wants PROS to put this to the board, this was the GM's idea.
Yeah, it's a project. On a CCSD property.
I have this idea, you know, like, we already had gone through all of this, but then you're out there with construction and someone from CCSD comes out and says. Why are you building this on rubbish? It's like, oh, it would be helpful to have a little letter that said, see, it's okay.
Yeah, but you don't have it anywhere in your charter that there's some type of project limit to what needs to be asked or not asked.
No, we, we never build anything, this is like the first thing. That we may have ever built other than the benches.
Gotcha, meaning the first thing you've actually gone out the contract and hired somebody to come and do.
Other than benches, yeah.
And the, and, and maintenance.
We didn't do the work, of course, oh, we didn't, you mean, that wasn't FFRD. But we don't construct things.
Yeah, no.
So we're.
Can we recommend it now?
Uh, anyone else? Anyone on Zoom? Uh, then, uh, any discussion or all entertainment motion?
I make a move that we do it, a second or third, Jim.
Me too.
Okay. So, uh, so Jeff, so who do you have as, uh, proposing a second?
Yeah, I'm, I wasn't sure, okay.
I made the motion that we.
Sure.
Did I get that, is that fair enough?
Sure, that's good. I don't even think. And I think. That's the motion that felt so. Uh, so then, uh, Steve?
Yes. I.
I. They commit? Yeah. I'm.
Hi.
I. Five eyes, have it, and, um, excited to say this will be coming to the board, I can't say when, but it, you know, probably in March. Uh, the way they, they line things up, when, you don't have, and do you have a time when you need it? From the board?
Uh, well, if it's.
Perfect.
Full pressure.
Our environmental, uh, approval expires in June, so I'd have to get it extended because it's been two years.
Yeah.
Um, and. I'm concerned about. When, if we possibly get it built this summer during the dry season, that would be great if it's March, I don't know then, I, I'm gonna go talk to contractors.
Yeah, so, uh, David and I will, will be chatting with Matt and saying, can we please get it on the agenda, uh, as I be.
Thank you.
Um, and, and again, uh, kudos, thank you for all, all of the, uh, the, the friends of this international reserves. Yeah, and friends, albers of the ranch showing up and somehow you didn't, uh, burn an hour, because that's what we were already.
And Kitty, I just want to thank you for doing the presentation.
Yeah.
I mean, it's nice as PROS to have a formal presentation for a project that we can formally put forward to CCSD, I appreciate the process.
Oh, sure.
Somebody got it together, yes.
Yeah. All the plans, it's like, if you want more information, I'll have to make it up because that's all.
Um. That closes the topic, thank you.
Fantastic.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh. And. That's really no easier than I expected, but I'm pleased that it was that easy, so, yes, thank you all. Uh, which brings us to topic six B, um. Uh, is this the one, most quickly we've moved along, I guess we're, uh, good, what is it, performing, uh?
Performing and storming.
Performing, uh, we might be in that, uh, performing stage, it's one forty-seven, um. How can we go to the agenda topic about the goals, so thanks. Thank you all.
Let's have my board game and then on online.
Yeah, so did it great, yeah, great, sorry, my, my, the ranch, uh, all dressed up. Thanks, y'all. Yeah, we had our first. Weeding Wednesday this morning of the year, on the, the mustard on the, uh, on the three hills above the block is. It's getting thick already.
Oh, my God.
So, uh, yeah, we were out this morning, uh, uprooting mustard, um, thank you, Doug. So just, uh, right, right, and there is segue from, uh. The Lincoln Border Walk is to our goal, it's guiding. So, uh, let me. Bring that. Um, that up. Um. Okay. I want to share. We can get.
Yeah.
Okay, buddy, nah.
Everybody left, yeah.
Were you here for a reason?
I don't know, actually, I thought maybe I could say something about my complaints, but.
Yeah, you missed the public comment period.
Where they only had to be on the agenda.
Oh, and had to be on the.
But, uh, but you're here, let's, let's hear from it.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's it. Thank you, Steve, and I apologize for that, right?
No, I, I think because you said we didn't have a public comment because of the special meeting, but.
But also.
Yeah.
Well, so let's, uh, you know. Yeah, yeah.
Well, you, you guys don't know why we.
Yes, we know. And, uh, and it's, uh, it's noisy out there.
Yeah.
And I did, I did send something in today, but I, I think. If you guys can bear with me. This was this morning. And, uh. Um. I thought it was. I can't get it. Um. Sorry, I, maybe I can't work my phone in here. Anyway, it's, I. Go my bedroom.
Um. Yeah.
That's. Since all day long. Yeah, so, um. I mainly, my public comment is, you know, we built the house in nineteen ninety-nine before the ranch was sold. And, uh, there was an EIR done, I think in two thousand. And uh, there was an EIR done, I think in two thousand six, before they took the, we flipped these trees down. Which sort of made a nice buckle down there, so, the trees are gone, the dog park's underneath my bedroom and underneath the deck. We can't open our doors because it's just way too noisy, thanks for the sign, but that just took care of the fight, the seven thirty. It's all big, and John and I can't build it on our deck, he's trying to paint, he has to put the music on really loud so we can't hear it. I love dogs, we've had tons of dogs, but I don't know what can be done for us, I, if we list the house. We have to, uh, real estate agent said we have to put, we have a nuisance, which is gonna increase the value of our home down there. So I don't know, you know, I, I look down there, we would gladly pay for the big, big dog park part move over to the other side. So it wasn't so intrusive all day long, knew, you know what it's like to have the dogs barking all day. Yeah, it's not pleasant. And I don't know what can be done, you know, it's, it's a problem. And somebody asked me, well, what about the children, well, that's a whole different story, you know, it's, 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 it's an echo chamber down there. I was, the EIR that was done did say that they had to mitigate it, because there is a noise problem down there. So, I don't know, you know, I don't wanna be me.
Oh, thanks, and thanks, Steve, you're welcome.
Yeah, I mean, uh, we, we were, we don't wanna be mean about this, because people love that dog park, but I don't know what can be done. There's a lot of land there. Move it somewhere, yeah, so, thanks for letting me speak, glad you're well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, not on the agenda, so I can't dive in.
Yeah, I know, it's too bad.
Thank you. Well, right later, let's, let's talk about that. Let's, let's do that, uh, probably best to do it next time, because it's.
Yeah.
Not.
I, I don't know if there's anything we can say other than. Is there a future agenda items thing, item on this?
Of course.
Okay, so why don't we put it on.
The audible signature of the dog park.
Yes.
Kitty, do you know?
It'd be interesting to measure to see if it's over sixty-four.
Required, is it like thirty-five decibels or something?
I don't know, it's in there.
I've got a design.
Do you know, we should measure.
Put it on your phone, I have a gap on the phone.
I know, but I've got one, actually, I've got Riverball.
You guys are violating the ground right now.
The prime directive.
Brown, a brown.
The prime directive.
Prime direction, that's right, that's right, you guys are trying to get stuff.
Under your breath, stop talking about.
Where's. Can't find the page down. Screen, I cannot fit it, I'm trying to get down to the, the page with the uh. Keep going, it's. I know, because this is, this is blocking, so I can't get my mouse to the uh.
Oh, the sixteen.
Close this, why don't we close that window there?
Which share, and just click on it.
Right, well, I wanna be sharing, so we can see this.
Yeah.
There, there we go.
Now, this one, it's just a presentation.
So, um, so on this, so on, on the, on the spreadsheet of this, right, you know, someone asked me, like, how do you get? You know, like, this goal received five votes from three members of the committee, and someone asked me the other day, so how did that happen? Like, oh, right, you know, but uh, this is a spreadsheet, and it's on the, it's on the website now. And uh, they've got a link to it in today's, you know, packet, we can get there, the first uh. First worksheet, explains the how, but, you know, we, uh, for those who are still listening out there, we, we each had seven little stickers. And we, you know, instructions are where to use those anyway you see fit, all in one, spread them out, however you wanna do it, and that's how we ended up with. Um, a larger number of votes than voters. So, uh, I guess a question here is, and several of these we've already talked about in, in our. Um, committee member communications, but uh, I guess two questions, one is, um, like. Is this what we're thinking, I, I did my best to accurately reflect what we had on the flip charts. And um, so one is, you know, revisions to this, and then um, discuss a bit how we're gonna use this. To drive progress going forward on each of these items. And I believe this will be on the board agenda, probably February fifteenth, for the board to, because the CCSD board will weigh in on. Do they approve our goals, I'm sure they'll, they'll wanna chime in on that. So, I'm looking at this, are there any revisions we need, that need to be made to this, to accurately reflect what we said?
I, I would propose one, so if nobody voted for what I'm in charge of.
Which I wanted to, I ran out of stickers.
Okay. What I, what I would like to do is run that by the general manager, I'd like to chat with him and see what, what he thinks, if, if that should be valid or not.
Okay.
So that, so that'll be an action item I'll take out of this today.
Okay. Yeah. Uh, sounds good. So, hard, Steve, do we still have you as champion on the county, or does that need to change?
On the.
Park and Recreation.
Great.
That's the very first one.
Oh.
Are they the overarching goals?
Yeah, for the county, yeah.
Champion you?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'd like other people to go to that thing, just because.
Managing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever, without me.
I have a strategic plan for that.
She's planning on going next month, and if I can, I'll go the following month, so.
But we'll write it through you, so that you can say something there.
Okay. And, and fair enough, and, you know, Brown X says, okay, anything that, if, if most of us are talking about something, we have to do it here in a public meeting. But, um, you know, any two of you, you know, you know, we won't, we won't make it a serial meeting, but if Shannon goes, Shannon will. You know, talk with Steve, and Steve hears what I learned, right? And the next month if someone else goes, then the same thing happens, but it, Steve has the lead for this. Yeah. Uh, and absolutely right, the more of us you get involved, the better. And uh, yeah, so it, in, three of us can go any one of these without, you know, getting uh. Uh, getting control.
No, not three of us, two of us.
Uh, well, actually, uh.
Two can do it without.
The way, it, it's cool the way it works, since there are six on the committee, even though I'm non-voting, right, I'm a member of the committee, so that makes six.
Oh.
And a forum is more than half, so it takes four of us to make a forum.
So three. Oh, well, that's a nifty little V D there.
Me and two of you, any three of you, it's like, uh, I.
So three of us can have a discussion and not be a violation.
That's right.
Oh, there you go.
That's right. Some, sometimes, you know, the rules aren't as bad as we, as we, I think they are, yeah, uh, we have to be able to get things done, and. Um, okay, what else, any other changes we ought to make to these?
I could see on mine, since I have a lot of those things in there, in, in the, like, the intersections, I think there was a lot of trail segments. That could be looked at, if, I'd like to present that, you know, for, the four things, for intersections, and palm off. A bunch of sections in the county thing, like possibly the uh. Uh, uh, Pines, or Cambria Pines Lodge, wanted to put a sidewalk in. You know, I asked about sidewalk, I made the wrong word, I didn't, you shouldn't use sidewalk, you know, the guy said, when Italy went to Kerker on the gutter, and I didn't wanna chase it. But it, it was just a walkway, an extension of the dirt, leveled that area off and so forth, so a lot of those segments could be chased by other people if they were interested. I guess that's my point, so, uh, even though it could stay, there's no changes, so, so present that among ourselves, it'd be about the same. But maybe a few other, I don't even know, we've changed names on this stuff. I really like the idea of using the uh, NCAC as, because they try and force. Investments from the county. That would. That's, I think a lot of this should be there too.
A lot of those things.
He's already doing it.
So that are, should be done that way. Every month, uh, uh, Kermit is, is at NCAC.
Yeah, and I support that.
Yeah.
And uh. But individually. And they, you know, and you say push, um, ropes, you, you can't push things with ropes, uh, NCAC is advisory. So they, they don't have, uh, only if they can be pushed, they can only fall, right? They can, they can advise, they can uh, control, maybe, but that's about uh, the, the verbs can get there.
Bruce is there and listening.
Yeah, he's, but he's listening, and, and, yeah, the more, but Shannon said it, Steve said it a minute ago, the more we get in. Visible to the county, um, that squeaky wheel somehow, eventually we'll get some, we'll get some grease.
Well, I would, like, if I could, but you know, actually, uh, the, when we brought up the uh, issue of the. County road down to the dog park, from, from the intersection to the dog park, he's uh, he looked it up on his little thing and said, yeah, that's a county thing. And he said, he said, I'll send direction for them to do this, well, essentially, he typed out the same thing we could all do on the public.
Right, he just put in the information for that form.
He signed his name, which may make a difference, but we can all do that, and, and it's sort of one of the, after I realized what he had done, but. Uh, he waved a magic wand, we thought, but it really was just another pencil moving in the air, so it really didn't. Bounce things, as you can tell by the road down there, it didn't exactly, they got a grading job one day, but I think we can push it.
Would everybody in town fill out that form?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and make an article, put it in the Cambria, for Cambria.
Just gotta do it.
Thing, and, and probably just leave it there for a while, so everyone can get a look at that, because everyone could, if everyone filled out that form. And sent it in, it might go somewhere, I can see that one man, Bernie, doesn't win. It, it's gonna take a, a crowd, and it's, it's more than that, somebody carrying a torch for a specific project, and if we had to get money for it. You know, that's the community care there, might be able to assist in a lot of these small projects, so it's open season, but um, I think, oh. Let's do that again, I'd like to put the segment, represent that for intersection where we are on that, if it, if the county separates and, and uh. Keep the county separate, because Caltrans is not interested in working with the county, or the county likewise, either way, and it's not because they don't want to, it's just. It's just another project, and they, they just lose a lot of space.
Excellent strategy, um, if we get hundreds. Maybe a thousand, you know, uh. Yeah, Cambrians to submit, you know, the request. Um, do we want to, do we wanna show up then, or do we wanna focus? Uh, we could end up communicating, you know, desire for the county to do something about almost everything. Something tells me that would get little done, if we somehow agree on, we're gonna work on the county on one thing for the next. However long it takes to budge the rock, and focus on that till we get something done. So, you know, which way do you all think would work better?
I, I get what you're saying, and that's kinda how I feel about the trails, I'm in support of all of the trail ideas, but I do think that if we took one. And just hyper focused on it, and just started nailing the county over that issue, we're much more likely to get it done, we spread out. With all the different trail ideas we have, which they all deserve to be, you know, paid attention to, but the likelihood of them getting done is much less. Um, the road thing is on me, and I reached out to Blake and, and Bruce for meetings to start this, they know about it, so. They know the conversation we're gonna have, um, and that's an excellent idea to get people in town to start filling out that form. And I would have them just focus on that piece of roadway between Burton and, or rodeo grounds, drive.
Yeah.
Um, so that's a great idea, but, yeah, and then as I was looking at this spreadsheet, I personally would like to see this spreadsheet cleaned up before we give it to CCSD. Um, we need to eliminate the final column, we don't need that.
Really, that, that goes away.
Yes, um, you know, there's a lot of things that we could do to make this look a little, a lot cleaner. And I don't want them to think that just because it got zero votes, it's not a priority, if it made this list, it's actually a priority.
Yes.
It's just, you know, the higher, the priority level.
Now, let's go to that, let's go to the spreadsheet, I'm, I'm gonna talk a little bit about what I'm intending, I wonder if this will get there. Right, so this is on the CCSD website, um, we're the first committee to do this, we've got, you know, um. Rather than just meetings, this is, and we, I'm thinking we'll put other things here as well.
Okay.
Things we're working on, um, it links to trail projects or whatever, um. The uh. Is it gonna open?
It don't.
Oh, okay, right, there it is, of course. It would probably take me longer, I've got my computer here, but, there we go. So my intent is that, uh, following each meeting, um, right, enable editing, um. Following each meeting, we insert a row, now, and then, you know, this, you know, for the next version, we hide, and then, you know, this is, you know, today is. Now, update, um, but.
So I still like to wordsmith this whole thing.
Okay.
Um, I think it should be a PDF that it's linked to, so if we update a column with notes for the project every time we meet, which I think is an awesome idea. We re-PDF it and put it up there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because sharing a spreadsheet is never a good idea. And I mean, what do you, I just, I just think it looks, it's a great information, I love the information, but we need to wordsmith it and make it look a lot cleaner. Okay, everybody?
I move that you do that. Because it sounds like you know exactly what you're talking about.
I do.
And, and to do that would be wonderful, before it goes to the board.
Yeah, action item, I think, I'm probably, I probably gotta wait for this needs to go to the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
It would take ten minutes.
I'm an ad hoc.
Right.
You guys can be an ad hoc.
And so we're ad hoc to knock that out, and, uh, right, cool.
Ad hoc.
And I don't think, um, I put it a few like this, because I don't think anyone can save this back to their.
No, they can't, but not everyone can view an Excel spreadsheet. So PDF is something everyone can view.
Thank you, that's, that's the key, okay.
So for rule visibility, we have to.
Good thing. All right. Maybe I missed something, do we need to put up routines, goals and objectives and our priorities, I'm not sure we've gone through that, is that something that we need to do as a committee?
We did that.
To agree on that, did we do that? Well, this is the first time.
To resolve.
This is how we time, this, this committee has looked at this document.
So we can refine it right now.
Yes. Okay, so I.
Let's go by line by line and refine a little.
Fair enough, and in any case, I could email it to me and you, um, I will do a file, save as, to the desktop. Uh, drive, browse, browse, we have me to the desktop.
Yeah.
Uh, there we go, okay, um, and.
Same.
Uh, and, uh. In the meeting, I just put. Meeting, okay, uh, one. Here we are, meeting, I, save, all right. All right, just roll.
Just sorry, just a protocol question, Anna, Steve, can we, can we just make a motion to approve the goals and the objectives and the priorities? Pending refinement, or I mean.
Yeah.
Yes, I would rather refine and then look at the document.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay.
And approve it.
Okay. Yeah, and we're, uh.
And we don't really have to go through wordsmithing here, cause I can, I can take it and make it like.
Well, that's what I count on.
Yeah. You wanna do that?
Uh, I mean, I don't know the changes we're talking about here.
Okay, so this is easy. So goal, first one. Uh, erase everything except for, um, liaison with the county parks and recreation.
That's like a title. Uh, so it is a goal, as I, as you, as I put to the group, uh,
To.
In, in December, it is, is a defining of, of outcome that we'll achieve.
But that's what we want. What do we want to, what is the outcome that we want to achieve by going to the the county's parks and recs meeting?
Greater, you know, increased influence of the county.
Yeah, would the last column then be, uh, result or desired results?
Well, that's what this column is defined as.
Yeah.
See, that's, you know, in my version of what a goal is, is it's, it's an outcome that we're aiming to achieve.
Yeah.
Now, if you, if you're wanting to boil down into a, a succinct three or five word title, then I would call that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, all right, then delete it, yeah.
Um, now I'm okay with that. But.
I think that would be, you've got a title originally as well. Okay. That would not be a bad title and then the desired results, or we can, we can maybe do more increase, uh, more specific would be useful rather than try to combine the two. Uh, if that makes any sense, that's more words, but, you know, maybe we don't because how many more words do we need? Um, but I think we see, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I agree that it should be adjusted before it goes.
How would you propose it?
Yeah, what you're trying to do is, you're saying, um, no, don't have a PDF, have a.
No, and it needs to be PDF, that's definitely a thing.
Sure.
Okay. No, I mean, I, I get what you're saying. You're trying to, to make the, you're trying to word these as goals.
They're specific outcomes that we're achieving. Uh, and if you remove that from it, then to me, that's a twat.
Yeah.
And, and she's looking for a better definition of the oh, maybe not, item, that I've lined item.
I don't think she, she was, she was trying to make it so that it was, uh, you know, format that was better for the board to consider.
Yeah, exactly. Or even the general public to really look at it and pick out like what, what our actual goals are.
But yes, that's what you were saying. That would be the, that would be the pipeline.
Yeah, no, you don't, you don't have to include that.
Something like.
You know, I mean.
No.
No. I think, I think you have the goals.
Right. Yeah, I mean, format, one thing, and I, I, I'm personally fine with that to make it easily readable by whoever.
Right, 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 right.
But just looking at this, I mean, it feels like we've got, we've got what we need at this point, don't we?
Well, I mean, that's why I just wanted to go through each one and make sure we understand the goals. So and the only ones I think that we get a little bit messier on and possibly are just the, um.
Google that. Let's go on that. Okay, it's, you're okay with this one?
Yes.
Cause you own this?
Yes.
Voting's okay?
I bet we voted on all this. Didn't we all say we were gonna vote on this?
Well, no, no, we, we, we did, we had our stuff on the wall and it was a mess. And I like, you know, as well as I could record, and so I took that, I boiled it down. You know, it's not, you know, uh, it took a little bit of work to get it into sentences. And so the sentences as they are, we haven't discussed as, as a group.
I'm good with my charge.
Thoughts, thanks. Um, this one, okay? Yeah. Uh, sure. That's, uh, approve each ranch, each ranch committee park plan. Yeah, and with the outcome being approved.
Got it.
Uh, rodeo grounds road paved to the community park. Yeah, and that's again, the outcome.
And what you do is you just make three or four accidents there, all of a sudden.
Can I, can I say something on that real quick, just out of memory? It seemed at one point they wanted to do that and then somebody said it's not environmental to pave it. They didn't want it paved.
Yeah, that, all that crap had to do with somebody thought it'd be better to have non-paved.
Non-paved and there was some, okay.
Just that waste of time and money to put that ground down or event.
Well, no, I'm not disagreeing, but that was part of you, I'm just trying to tell you some stuff that I.
That is right.
Yeah, and then there was a problem with the intersection.
There's a huge problem with the intersection.
Somebody, somebody from county is gonna have to make a, a road decision there, and that's right. And if they pave it, then they're gonna have to make that decision. And right now they're not, they're.
So rodeo grounds road paved to the community park and intersection would be more.
Again, I think we are just kind of muddying the waters by asking them to tackle the inter.
They're gonna have to anyway.
Exactly. If we get them to pave the road, they're gonna have to tackle the intersection. That's gonna be life. Capital improvement.
Got it. That's just today's notes. Yeah. Um, trails and walkways. And Kermit, you, you wanna work this a bit? I think these are words that you're okay with, yeah?
Yeah. I mean, um.
Do you want to change anything in here now?
No, I think with the the goal and additional detail, okay, now that I see the additional detail, yes, that, that worked out well.
Yeah, that works out well. Additionally.
And then once we really start looking at more detail, we can start spreading this stuff out a little bit.
Do you wanna say coastal trail connecting Cambria to Cayugas? Does, that's really the goal.
Yeah, yeah, I'm whatever. Can I ask you a question real quick there? So does the coastal trail have to be on the beach?
No.
Right, you know, the one from wherever to wherever it goes in, right?
It's the way to get from there to here, any way that we could figure out.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, well, because I was like, I don't really feel like trying to get it on the other side of Harmony. That would just be silly.
But do the old, uh, highway runs perpendicular to the highway? There's actual real estate.
Well, that's what I said to the county. I'm like, it's pretty big. There's a lot of space. That's not the hardest. It's gonna be easier than the Bob Jones Trail.
Over private property anyway, both.
Yeah, okay, I'm on it. I get it. You knew which way you could get that.
You know. But to Shannon's point, so.
Cambria to Cayuga.
Well, uh, could, could say Cayuga's Cambria, is that what you were saying?
Cambria to Cayuga, yeah.
But I, I can't read the sentence, Sansimian too. I mean.
Well, let's, again, let's tackle one at a time.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's do that.
You can almost walk Cambria to Sansimian.
Yeah, already, yeah.
I do all the time.
Yeah, so. Can you, Cambria to Cayugas.
Yeah.
You're gonna say, right?
Got it.
Just seems like a nice project I can get behind for sure.
Yeah. Cambria. Ooh, Cayugas. The next one I delete.
You wanna delete this?
Yes. Okay, you've got no votes and, and there's an explanation here. I think that.
Yeah, I agree.
Tried to do this. Some guy bought
Yeah.
From the county a piece of property. He's not gonna let anybody do it. Use it as an exit. Access. I think it would take a legal process.
Yeah.
We're not gonna complete this year, where you would have to claim eminent domain. And I'm reluctant to bring it up because I don't want them to close the park because we don't have multiple exits.
It's a good idea.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with Jim.
Now, now, these are not, we're not gonna get these all the.
Right.
In this current.
Right, but still.
We can open it again.
We can open up another if there's a possibility of something.
Sounds like general agreement, take this off.
I'm still gonna talk to, I'm still gonna talk to Matt about the history, cause he should know what the history is.
The coastal, do we have to have an updated trail plan from the Pro's master plan?
This is something that Kermit brought up. I, I don't know why we would need to do this to do that, but.
Then let's take it off. If we find we need to do something, add it back on in the notes, but right now, let's not hand tie ourselves if we don't have to.
Yeah. I, which one, this part?
Coastal trail. Second one over second.
That was just a comment more than anything else by.
Yeah, oh, you're saying, imagine that also, that's an idea.
Coastal plan.
No, just eliminate the second row over access, the, um, master plan information.
What was under additional detail?
Those are, I think Kermit had in there that nineteen ninety referencing.
Yeah.
The nineteen ninety four document, I think.
Right, that was just a true, yeah, that'd be the other thing. So we're, so we're gonna take that part out.
Yeah. Um, and and it's only low relative to the others.
Right.
Right, and that's it. It, it, that's all, it is, it's still, if we achieve that, it would be humbles, but well, which ones are we gonna drive first, others, but we're gonna, but we're gonna keep pursuing this.
Yeah, but I think that, that last one really is a goal of the Board of Directors.
Oh, yeah.
You know, wants it more than, we can, if we can assist, fine, but the Board of Directors is really the people that are gonna spend money to make, to get the detail and spend money to.
Well, I don't know who, who's gonna spend what money. Um, would you say it could be true? But where, uh, that makes a huge assumption. Could be true, could be, could be false, but, um, we are, I mean, it's within the purview of Pro's.
Okay, fine, clear.
Okay, I have another thing to throw out there.
Oh.
Okay, so if it made on this list, it's prioritized.
Yeah.
Do we need to prioritize? Right now we have a very small list. Basically, it's our list for the year. Do we need to offer uh, a priority? Like, can they just all be top priorities because they're made on list?
Sure, I, yeah, and they're, and they're in different, um.
Different spheres.
Different subjects.
So get rid of the priority column entirely, because it made our list, it's a priority.
And, and why confuse somebody wondering why something got three votes or something didn't get two, two votes or anything?
And oh, like open space, the inventory of the open spaces, it's a mid priority, but, you know, Jeff's gonna be working it with David.
What you're gonna say is, say, say you wanna have your house painted, big old house, and they come out, they put scaffolding on it, and it takes them a week to put the scaffolding. Uh, they give her that house painted and uh, somebody says, you know, that's scaffolding, it's so nice, let's just leave it there. And you say, no, we won't scavenge it down. I think what you're saying is, this prioritization was
Our scaffolding.
Our way to get it.
Yeah.
On the list and it weeded thing off, but we don't need to keep that on.
I think it just communicates confusion to someone looking at this list, like, why are you working on that? That's a low priority.
Right.
It's not, it's on our list. We could, we could take our list and if you want, like you do, move up mid and top of low and delete the priority and we know in order our priority.
I like.
But it's not even a priority. They're all gonna happen hopefully.
Wrong, good, wrong. So, and and when I bring this to the board, somebody asks me that, I can simply say these, um, the Pro's Committee knows what the priorities are, but we wanna communicate this with, uh, with consenses and as a team. And they all made the list.
Correct, there you go.
Okay, I'm here, and Steve.
Because they, they, okay, most of the timetable will be set by exterior influences, they, you know, they, Caltrans, county, you know, will, you know, will move as fast as they do. And they don't, you know, they're, they work on glacier time.
And what if we get a low priority thing done? We don't get a top priority thing done. It kind of like, makes it look like we were not
Yeah, yeah.
working our own list.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing, in fact, in my mind, that would factor in there in terms of prioritization is limited funding. And if we've only got so much money.
We don't have any, so.
But each project, we're gonna need to get the money to do that project, so it's.
Yeah, I, I guess it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's okay. Fair enough. I, I did not see that comment, but that's, that's smart. Okay. All right, uh, let's jump to public comment.
Oh, yeah, so let's get a public comment for sure.
Oh, it's most.
And then I'd be ready to move on.
How do I do this and see the move of this thing? I'm half time, I'm, soon, okay.
We can get this here.
Can I make this bigger? Exit minimize video. And I'm sorry, y'all. So, so, so Tony, Laura, or Crosby, uh, y'all wanna?
Jump in and comment on this, uh.
It's all right, it's taken us so long to get there. All right, um, uh, yeah, I'll, uh, all right, uh, who's, who's up today?
Okay, uh, this is Crosby. Good afternoon, Chair Thomas and the members of this committee. I, I just have an observation, uh, looking through the agenda package for today's meeting. There were the conditions of, of approval of the permit for the previous Fiskelini Ranch, uh, coastal development permit, and several places in there, it talks about the CCSD shall contribute to the North Coast Road Improvement Fund. This occurs at several places in there, and I looked it up, it's title thirteen point oh one of the county ordinances. And I'm just thinking, it, it, it looks like the county gets to determine how much the CCSD contributes to the North Coast Road Improvement Fund. So when we're talking to the county about paving the road into the rodeo grounds, if you, if you're talking to them at the same time, they're talking about setting your contributions to the North Coast Road Improvement on, you can bet that they're going to take into account your request to pave the road into the rodeo grounds. It's just kind of an interesting tie in there. You need to kind of think about what you ask for. And then try to negotiate it in a favorable way. Otherwise they'll say, well, they will, we'll pave the road into the rodeo grounds and we'll add that to your contribution to the North Coast Road Improvement Fund. Just something to think about.
Give it him, thanks. Okay, thank you. Uh, look a little deep, more deeply into that. Anything else?
I move we adjourn.
Well, if I look at the agenda, it sure feels like we're done.
Was the future agenda item.
Oh, future agenda item for, um, audible signature of the dog park.
Yep.
Uh, well praised. Um, and, you know, Kermit, if you you know, are we not, we not needing to have a motion to approve our goals and objectives? Is that?
We should.
We all agree.
I moved to approve the goals and objectives and then adjourn.
Look at that a moment here. So, um, do I have a motion to approve the, and, and I'm not calling them goals and objectives, there's a column of goals.
Goals.
Okay, goals.
Yeah, I move to approve the goals.
Uh, Jim? Hi.
Shannon?
Hi.
Jeff? Hi, Kermit, right?
Hi.
My advice. Thank you for that reminder. Got it. Um, and anything else on future agenda?
If it's okay with you, if somebody comes up with an idea during the month prior to prior to you putting out the agenda, we'll send you an email and you'll consider it.
Yeah, that, that's always, uh, you know, desired, um, and whenever our meeting is, it, the Monday, noon of the Monday prior is when I need to get all my input to Haley, so she can, her magic, she can get it back to us. So, uh, kind of over that weekend.
Great.
Oh, I lost my.
If, if nothing else.
It is two twenty nine P, and this meeting of improvement is adjourned.
Why, you wanna tell me a story?